Good evening, everybody. Thank you for being here tonight. We're going to call this meeting to order. At seven oh one P M., the school committee meeting of March first, two thousand twenty-three. Chair Rosemarin is out of town and unable to join us this evening. So I have the responsibility of chairing the meeting in her absence. So as we get started, I'd like to see if we're ready to approve the agenda that we have this evening. Does anyone have any changes or items to remove off the agenda? Okay, great, seeing none. We can move forward and approve our agenda, and I will hand it over to Dr. McKinney for the superintendent's update. Thank you.
Well, good evening. Thank you, Dr. Carol. First thing on the agenda is the special education presentation. We'll turn things over to Sue Maselli, our director of people personnel.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for the opportunity to be with you tonight. I'm just gonna try and share my screen with you. Thank you. Does everybody see that? Can I? Yes, great. So thank you for the opportunity to share an update with you from the Office of Pupil Personnel Services. On behalf of my assistant director, Mark Harrison, and I, we're glad to be here tonight with you. Oh, excuse me, just thought of dancing for me. Sorry. The Office of the Office of Pupil Personnel Services has several roles for the district. We oversee special education services for students preschool through age twenty-two. We oversee the provision of supports for Section five oh four accommodations. We provide guidance for educational stability for our students who experience homelessness or military educational impact or are in the foster care system. We also coordinate special education transportation across the district. Additional responsibilities include oversight of homebound and hospital-bound education, and we are fortunate to collaborate with CPAC and District Administration on all issues related to special education. We offer a continuum of services in our special ed office that consists of consultation services to providers, teachers, parents, and community. We offer push-in and pull-out services, which include services that happen in general education and services that happen in small group settings. We have opportunities for co-taught instruction in content areas across the district, K to twelve, and we are able to support students who have a higher level of need in several specialized programs that offer very individualized educational opportunities for kids with a variety of disabilities. Here is an overview of our district's special education strands. You can see that we have several strands supporting kids with a wide variety of needs. I would like to highlight some of the additional resources we've provided this year. You will see in the second column for our students who have language-based disabilities related to dyslexia, we have opened an additional self-contained classroom this year. That is a new addition to the district. And you will also see in the third column that we've opened additional language-based supports for children who have neurodiverse educational profiles. This year, we've started in a K to five model, and next year, we're excited to expand that model to middle school. The rest of our programming has been similar to what I've presented in the past in terms of having supports for students with autism preschool through post-grad, students that have emotional and mental health needs, right preschool all the way up through grade twelve and beyond, as well as our students who are more complex, having opportunities to participate in the collaborative classrooms at Cunningham and then reach and achieve as they age through the district. I wanted to share a little bit with you tonight about our changes in special education enrollment over the last four years. This gives you today's snapshot of numbers of students enrolled because special ed is a rolling process and children are found eligible throughout the year. This is just a good snapshot number of what our March data is looking like. You can see that we have fairly equal distribution across our four elementary schools. Drawing your attention to the Tucker Elementary School, seeing an increased enrollment is really about the opportunities we've had to try to keep students in their neighborhood school in the last few years. And that is exemplified in our budget request of the intensive learning model and really make sure we can support Tucker families staying at Tucker whenever possible. You can see at the middle school and elementary, excuse me, middle school and high school level, that our numbers have grown. There's lots of reasons for that, and we're gonna talk a little bit about some of those in a few minutes. Out of district, we've had additional changes in where students are supported when they've required a higher level of support outside of Milton Public Schools. Those numbers are reflected. Residential programs support students twenty-four hours a day, three hundred sixty-five days a year. Day programs are students that attend school and travel to and from their home every day, and the collaboratives are the conglomerate of schools that join together to develop programs for kids such as tech and accept. We have more families choosing to participate in private school at parent choice this year than we have had in the past, and I will talk a little bit later about some of our proportional and equitable share services that are reflected in that number. And then we continue to have students who have walk-in services. Those are mostly our youngest students in preschool who attend a community-based preschool and then come to Cunningham or Tucker for things like OT or PT or speech. Having technical difficulty. Here is a breakdown of our enrollment by disability category. These numbers are fairly comparable to the numbers we saw last year with an increase noted in specific learning disability and autism as the two areas that we're really seeing an increase and also neurological. And I have that slide for you a different way as well. This is sort of a breakdown in a pie graph to give you a sense of the number of students supported by percentage in each one of these disability categories. These are reasonable proportions and commensurate with a lot of state information and what other districts are experiencing. So there's nothing here that is alarming or concerning to us in terms of the number and percentage of our total enrollment for each category. It's important to share with you disability overviews from the last four years to give you a sense of how our trends have changed. You can see that our students who receive support due to a diagnosis of autism has continued to increase. Later, when I share with you the slide about our families who are choosing to relocate to Milton because of our services, that's reflected a little bit there. You can see in the second row, a concerted effort to address one of our disproportionalsities related to students who identify as Black or African-American and had historically been disproportionately identified in the communication category. We have worked very thoughtfully with teachers, special educators, our evaluation teams, our D E I director, to really be thoughtful about use of that category, and you can see in the data that there's been a significant reduction and thoughtfulness. So that means that students who have been previously in this category have been reevaluated to either determine a more appropriate category or reevaluated using tools that have demonstrated if they continue to need special education needs. As you look down, you will see, you know, trends in specific learning disability. I think a little bit of that is the post-pandemic outcomes. We have students that have missed some instruction in reading and math, and that number is reflected there. And you can see an increase in our students who are accessing services under the category of neurological. That is attributed to a couple of reasons. Number one, we have students with more complex needs, and we are trying to address those, and this category represents that. And secondly, we have students that have disabilities that impact more than one area, and this category helps capture learning with deficits related to school connections, mental health. It's just a wide variety, so that would attribute the increase there. While most of our students in Milton can be supported within district programming, we have a need to support some of our students in what are referred to as out-of-district placements. These are the programs that are day programs, special ed licensed, residential programs, again licensed or collaboratives, and they occur all over Massachusetts. And this year, to date, we've had several students transition out of district. We are working to continue to develop in-district programs to try and support students staying in Milton whenever possible, and we continue to try to encourage us to have more opportunities for students to come back. So we're gonna continue to do that work collaboratively. This year, we have several students who are aging out or graduating from out-of-district placements, and aging out means that they've reached the age of twenty-two and are going to be able to graduate to adult services, or graduating means that they've met the graduation diploma. So we are happy to celebrate five youngsters from our community reaching their age of maturity and moving on for special ed services into the adult world. Sorry. Having mouse issues. Our student support team is run by our two district inclusion specialists, one at the elementary level and one at the secondary level. They facilitate inclusion supports for all students. They collaborate with teachers, special ed, and general ed, and they also run our special education student support team, which is a place for general ed teachers to go when they have concerns about a student, to talk about what kinds of interventions are helpful. This data is relevant because it shows us how many students are being referred from general ed teachers to be discussed for tiered supports, special education referral, access to our district curriculum accommodation plan, and kids that might be experiencing some struggling in learning, and we want to be able to support them. What's noteworthy is that this number has decreased for most buildings since we really hit the height of the pandemic, and that's really exciting data to see. We are trending in a direction where kids are being more successful in the classroom, and teachers are experiencing that success, therefore not referring as many to the support team. That's exciting information to share. Our equitable or proportional share program is a program where we use federal money. This is not state or town money. This is federal money to support children who, at parent choice, have enrolled in private school in Milton. So for the purposes of this conversation, we're talking about Milton residents and non-Milton residents who choose to attend St. Mary's, St. Agatha's, Bonbon, Thatcher, and Center School. This year, our equitable or proportional share teacher is supporting seven resident and fourteen non-resident students by allowing families to access their special education supports while they participate in, for example, a Catholic school experience. This is an exciting program because it allows parents to have more choice if they choose to experience a private school education and still access some of their special ed supports. We should say that this program is a group entitlement. It's different than your I E P entitlement. It allows parents to ask and receive some of the services on their I E Ps for their children, and those services are provided on what's called a service plan, and it does not prevent a family from also accessing services by coming back to their neighborhood school and receiving services as a walk-in student. We typically are providing E L A and math and executive functioning support and work completion, and we're focusing on services that students can't access through health insurance like speech or OT or PT because we know that those options are available under healthcare coverage. We have been talking for the last few years about the disproportionality that Milton has been addressing. The first one related to our students who identify as Black or African-American and disproportionately identified in the communication category. I showed you earlier the slide which represented that number is changing. We are continuing to provide intensive early learning coach positions. These are grant-funded, and they support kids in preschool and kindergarten to really help develop those early phonological and vocabulary skills. We're continuing to use the Hagerty Phonological Curriculum. We are continuing to talk about our assessment practices to make sure that kids are really using this, experiencing assessment tools that are biased, reduced, and going to help us identify strengths and weaknesses in learning. And we are really excited that we've been able to offer diverse reading materials to our kindergarten teachers and our preschool teachers where our youngest emergent learners are able to see themselves represented in classroom literature. We've expanded this year to include some parent partnership nights in which we have invited families to come and participate in a shared learning opportunity with our early learning coaches where they can learn about how to bring some of these skills into their home setting. We've offered a couple of those so far, and we will be continuing that this spring. Our disproportionality related to student discipline has also been an area that we have been focusing on for the last couple of years. It's exciting to offer, to state that we have offered all district administrators an opportunity to complete three tiers of professional development from Suffolk University Restorative Justice Training, where they're learning about restorative practices and how we can implement changes in our discipline to support students being available and ready to stay in school. We've been working closely with our restorative justice coach to make sure that we have a lot of collaboration with teachers and administrators on the development of a restorative justice handbook. This handbook reflects a couple of things. Firstly, a restorative justice mindset where we're going to work toward restorative practices for discipline, and secondly, updates related to the new discipline laws that came into effect in November of twenty-two. Our restorative coach is continuing some ongoing work related to circles and collaboration with building staff. And this work has been in partnership with our D E I B director, who I think is here with us tonight, and we are all partnering on this work related to how we can support kids to make sure that restorative practices become commonplace, comfortable, and student-centered. Adina, are you here? Did you wanna talk about this slide a little bit? I think she's here, Glenn.
I am here, hi.
Thank you.
Sure. So I came on board last January, and in that time, I've developed really strong collaborations with staff at high school at Pierce. That's where I spend most of my time. I'm two days at Pierce, two days at Milton High School, and one day a week at Tucker. I now go to Glover for about a half-day a week and lead some circles there with teachers who are in my professional development cohort this year. And one thing that has also been a development since last year is that I have a group of high school students who come with me to all the schools and help me co-facilitate or even now facilitate the circles themselves. I'm trying to work with them to really develop their leadership capacity. I work with, I would say, you know, I say here, I work closely with twenty-five students. Those are the number of students right now at the middle and high school who are in my weekly circles. And how we chose those twenty-five students was really, it's ongoing, but at the beginning of the year, I really asked teachers and guidance counselors, adjustment counselors, who they would, and administration, you know, who they would recommend to really focus in on, who are at risk of a kind of traditional discipline punitive consequences based on their history, but also just based on what we see. What you'll see in the data soon is, we did have a group of kids very quickly in the year, in the seventh grade. You'll see in all the suspension data, it's mostly about the seventh grade this year. And a lot of that happened earlier in the year, and so we really got on top of that. And I'll talk, I can talk a little bit later about how we've worked with those kids and seen progress over the course of this year. But I do feel like, you know, a big update probably in the last year is just how closely I now work with those guidance counselors and administrators just every day, just really in the classrooms, working with kids, figuring out how to have a restorative approach in the moment so it doesn't escalate to a situation that then might become punitive. And as Sue was mentioning earlier, I've been, it's been a great process to work with Pierce and the high school around the handbooks, both leaders and assistant principals. I have met with them now multiple times to do revisions of the handbook. I've met with both school side councils and gotten feedback on the handbook, and now I'm really in sort of a final stage. I'm hoping to really have a pretty solid draft by the end of March. And I think there already is a solid draft in place that's now been shown to the entire staff at Pierce and the entire staff at the high school, and they've had the opportunity to meet with me either in a focus group or sometimes I've gotten some time at the principal time to talk with people about the handbook and get some feedback. And then also for some people who haven't been able to give me feedback in those sessions, they've been able to access it, you know, through a Google form and give me feedback that way. So it's really a from-the-ground-up document that I think is an exciting advancement in the, you know, work we've been doing. And then lastly here, it's, I'm leading two different cohorts of staff from across the entire district and, you know, varied roles, teachers, counselors, and from all different content areas. And it's just so exciting to have, I have fourteen people in cohort one and twelve people in cohort two. And so last year, I trained about fifty teachers. So this is bringing it up to about seventy. And again, not just teachers, but counselors. And so more and more now, I'm hearing, oh, there was a circle. I facilitated, you know, Spanish teacher had a circle in her class, and people are, I think that there is a lot of, I've gotten so much questions, I've gotten a lot of questions about how to really build the capacity of this work. And I think in some ways, the best way to do it is to really have teachers buy in in the initial stage and really spread it that way. So that's really it for this slide. That's, those are the highlights of the work.
Thank you, Adina. So as Dina spoke about, you can see here our discipline data related to the disproportionality work. We are seeing changes in the data. We are being more thoughtful about the use of internal discipline removals. Last year at this time, Pierce had experienced eleven internal removals, and now we are at four. That is a concerted effort to make sure we can support kids using restorative justice to stay in school and stay connected to curriculum and teachers. For external removals this year at Pierce, we are, have a slight reduction of six. Adina and I have talked a lot about the data and want to explain that this is episodes of removal, not students. So where you see the eight, that reflects a few students, multiple removals, not eight students who had a single removal. When the state looks at our data, they count total removals, not student total. So it's important for us to kind of put that data in context. We are continuing to address this second line of data reflecting students in special education and their removal rate and really making sure we're being thoughtful about that. This is an area where Adina and I have spent a lot of time because, as you can see, we have a lot of students in special education who are experiencing discipline, and we've been talking about that. When I talk a little bit more about initiatives going forward, we'll come back to this topic. As you can see in the second, in the last four lines of data, it represents breaking that data into our subgroups to give you a sense of which subgroups are experiencing the highest levels of removal. And we are going to continue to work with principals and administrators on being thoughtful about what we could do to continue to reduce all removals, but especially for our students who might experience that based on their subgroup. High, oh, sorry, high school data is similarly shown here. In terms of what we were reporting to you last year, you can see that the high school has done an amazing job at working toward reducing and eliminating internal removals and their external removals. To give you a sense, last year at this time, there were thirty-six episodes of removal at the high school, and this year, we're at ten. And that number is reflected in those subgroups below as well with the greatest reduction noticed in the subgroup of our children who identify as white and our children who identify as Black or African-American, going from twenty-one to nine and eight to two. So we have experienced a lot of thoughtful participation from building administration on using restorative practices in place of what would have been referred to as traditional discipline removals. Adina, do you wanna talk a little bit about the work that you're doing in terms of the sensation and online in training piece that staff are using to help kids reflect on use and how they're doing that sort of debriefing program? Do you wanna talk a little bit about that?
Well, I mean, the biggest reduction in suspension at the high school, you know, there were, I think, a total of sixty-four suspensions last year. Ninety-nine percent of them were because of vaping. And so now we're using a program called I Decide, which is, we were using a different program before, but I'm pretty sure they switched over to I Decide now, which is really a state-run program that where students do, you know, online, they have to stay after school for two weeks and do online work where they really have to, they're assessed on their competency and how much they understand sort of the impact of vaping. And it's been a very successful program. We, there's, I mean, look, there's also been a dramatic decrease in the number of students who are caught vaping. We think that there was an increase due to the pandemic and just a lot of anxiety and mental health issues that are going on. But it's been so dramatic to see how this program just really supports kids in addiction, in dealing with addiction, in dealing with anxiety, and understanding, you know, why they might be using substances. And so it just, this has been, I think, one of the, this has been a highlight. I think that where we need to go, it's interesting because looking at the Pierce data, I just wanted to say that the eight kids who've experienced external removals for Pierce, four of them at the very beginning of the year came to school under the influence. And that's four of the eight are kids who, who in September made the mistake of coming to school under the influence. And so they had to be removed because they couldn't be in school that day. But those kids, I've been working, and, you know, because I think one thing that's been great about my role is that it's very data-driven in the sense that I'm gonna go where the need is. And so I work very closely with those girls. And they, you know, while they've had some discipline issues earlier this year, since November, there have been no suspensions at Pierce. And so I do wanna say that that, to me, is, you know, while I don't even like that there's been eight suspensions, the fact that they all happened in the beginning of the year and that we've been working so proactively with these kids, I just really hope at the end of the year, we can say that we've, you know, figured out other ways of supporting them. So I just wanted to mention that as well because I think it provides a fuller picture.
Thank you, Adina. Sorry, I'm having slide difficulties here. So in terms of, I feel like I missed a slide. Excuse me for one second. In terms of professional development that we have been focusing on, I've spoken a bit, and Adina referenced this, that we have really been able to continue the professional development related to restorative practice. So administrators have had an opportunity to complete Tier one through two and three through Suffolk University and work collaboratively with Adina, either in her day-to-day work, but also in the professional development that she's offered. This year, we offered a pretty intensive Lindenwood Bell Professional Development to elementary and middle school special education teachers. This was really designed to target alternative literacy instruction for kids that were struggling. And we had ten teachers participate in very rigorous training related to the Seeing Stars curriculum. This spring, we are trying to bring SMART's Executive Functioning PD to our teachers. This has been something that staff have been asking for. We are seeing that kids need support in developing executive functioning skills, and we are endeavoring to provide that this spring. We're going to continue to provide professional development related to I E P development, assessment and evaluation. We've done a lot of work with the school psychologists around equitable practices and assessment and eligibility to really make sure we're being thoughtful about that process. Continue to offer professional development and certification to teachers who are seeking certification and licensure in Orton Gillingham and/or Wilson reading programs. These are typically curricula used with our students who experience learning deficits related to dyslexia. Our early learning coaches, we have two this year, they are continuing to provide ongoing professional development to preschool and kindergarten teachers related to the Hagerty Method for Early Phonology, which is really helping kids develop those pre, pre-literacy skills related to phonological development and background vocabulary. And finally, we will be focusing this spring on a new challenge. The Department of Education will be starting a two-year rollout of a new IEP template. And the district will begin training this spring and this fall to make sure that staff are ready for the new IEP template and that families are ready for how this will impact IEP development at the team level. Milton has participated in several initiatives by the state this year. We are finishing this week our sixth, six-year cycle for tiered focus monitoring. The old term for this was called the coordinated program review. It consists of a self-assessment that I reported on last spring that we completed last year. And this week, they are actually onsite completing our records review and parent and staff interviews. And Milton is finishing its participation in two indicators. The first one is indicator eleven, which talks about the timelines and process for initial eligibility. And indicator fourteen, which looks at post-secondary outcomes a year after our students graduate or age out, where are they, what are they doing and how has their education impacted them? In terms of next steps, the Office of People Personal Services will be very busy, as always. We are going to continue to advocate for the needs, given our space constraints in the district, for additional space to support running specialized programs for students who are aging through our district, preschoolers moving up to elementary, middle, high, high to post, post-grad. And we will continue to be advocating for physical space to run programs to keep students in district. We're going to continue to talk about our changes in out-of-district enrollment and the need to make sure we're supporting our families who students are experiencing their education outside of the district. We're going to continue to provide professional development related to executive functioning and co-taught. These are areas that teachers are also self-identifying as things that are need, that they feel a need for. So we're going to be focusing on those two initiatives for professional development. And again, we're going to be focusing on migrating to the new IEP template. I will say that's a two-year rollout, so, so we'll be making some decisions whether we'll be participating in that rollout for September of twenty-three or September of twenty-four. In terms of Pierce Middle School, I spoke earlier about some of the needs we're going to continue to develop there. And that includes the changing needs of our students with mental health needs at the middle school level and making sure that we have appropriate general and special education tiered supports. Been working closely with Dr. Fish on some of this work and we're hopeful that we can continue to increase our ability to support kids with a wider range of mental health needs at the middle school. And in conjunction with Adina and our DEI coach, Claire Galloway Jones, we're going to continue to work on equity and discipline and making sure that kids continue to have access to the robust supports in restorative justice model. It's been a pleasure to present to you tonight and I'm curious if I can answer any questions for the committee.
Thank you so much. I see member White have, have your hand raised.
Hi, thank you for this wonderful presentation. It was very thorough. I have two questions that I can, that I can put together. It has to do with the age of twenty-two when they age out of our programs. If a student's birthday is in February, do they finish through the school year and graduate in June? Or do they leave when they turn twenty-three, whenever that birthday is? And can you describe a little bit about what you call post-adult education, what that looks like?
Sure. So students who are unable to achieve a diploma level of credit and require support in what we refer to as transition planning. And that includes vocational training, pre-vocational training, self-care and living skills, transition planning, community skills. Those students are eligible to remain with the district. Most of them participate in our program we refer to as Launch that is housed at Milton High School. And it supports students from the period of time after they finish a traditional twelfth grade year until the day before they turn twenty-two. And that is their last day with us, whenever that happens. And during the last couple of years, when they're with us between eighteen and twenty-two, we work with the outside agency to which they've been assigned to determine what supports will look like for them with the adult world. And those typically include DDS, the Department of Developmental Services, Mass, rehabilitation for the blind, the ARC, the ARC resources for children who have autism. And there's a couple other for more nuanced disabilities like kids with hearing impairments, those kinds of things. When a youngster is turning eighteen, parents are applying to the state to determine which of these adult agencies their child will be assigned. And then that adult agency assigns a caseworker who starts to participate in transition planning between eighteen and twenty-two to make a determination about the adult services that a youngster will be eligible for upon turning twenty-two. So to answer to your question, member White, students end their time with Milton Public Schools the day before their twenty-second birthday.
Member Vargis.
Thank you so much. Thank you so much for this presentation. It was very thorough and I appreciate all the detail that you went into and it's great that we have all of these supports in place. I just had two quick questions. I wanted to ask, I think it was on slide six. It says, under special education enrollment, where it says attending private school at per, parent choice, if you could elaborate on what that is. And then I also wanted to ask about, I think it was slide fifteen, under a student support team. It's, it's so great to see some of these numbers going down. I did notice that the Pierce one did go up slightly from last year and I wanted to know if you had some insight into that.
Sure. So this is slide six and it shows our enrollment by building. Children who attend private school at parent choice are students whose parents have been told, have chosen to enroll them in a, a traditional private school setting. For example, in Milton, that includes Fontbonne and Thatcher, Milton Academy. Broader than that, we have students at places like B C Highs, Varian, Ursuline. And this is something that parents make a choice to place their child to have that sort of prep school experience. And when they do that experience in Milton, parents can consider accessing through the proportional share program in Milton. But equally, if they choose that experience at another community, say for example Dedham or Westwood or Boston, they can also choose to access special ed services through that federal program in the town in which they're enrolled. So this number represents preschool through, through eighteen, families that students attend private school at their choice. In terms of, I'm sorry, was that, which slide did you say, fifteen?
Yes, fifteen.
Yeah. So, you know, if, if, if I think about what's happening at Pierce, this is a snapshot data based on March one data. It's pretty comparable to where we were in twenty-twenty-one and it's, it's a little higher than twenty-one, twenty-two. It, it's, it's, it's a couple things. First of all, it's also scheduling, when students are scheduled. The end of year number gives us a total piece for the building. These numbers always reflect March first, so you can compare over, over time that way. It's, it's, it's a little bit bigger, but it's for students in a student body of, of over a thousand. So it's, it's less than one and a half per, of students per grade level who are accessing supports. We do know based on our out-of-district changes and based on our discipline data and based on our total enrollment that our middle schoolers are continuing to experience, you know, moderate to impactful mental health needs. And a lot of these referrals are rated to, are, are related to those types of topics. The number is a little bit higher, but only one higher at this point than we were during the height of the pandemic. So I think it's something that we'll be watching and be thoughtful about, but it's, but it's, it's just a snapshot of data.
Great question.
Thank you.
Dr. Miranda.
Yes, hi, thank you. I would echo what's been said already. Thank you so much for a very thorough presentation and for all the amazing work that you lead in the district along with the rest of the team. So thank you for that. I may have missed it and you, I think, explained it, but I did, my listening was not there as sharp as it should have been. But if you could go back and explain the internal, internal versus external discipline removal, I think I missed sort of the difference between those two. And second, if you could speak to what has been done already at Tucker to increase the number of students that are able to stay at their home school and what ideally we would do to continue to create the opportunity for more students to remain at Tucker. Thank you.
Certainly. So here is the snapshot data from Pierce Middle School. The internal column represents students that have an internal school suspension. So that means they're staying at school for the duration of the educational day and working on their schoolwork and possibly a restorative activity during the school day, but separate from a general education setting. The external means that they are not coming to school and experiencing time away from the building. In terms of Tucker, I'll try to back up to that slide. Sorry, scrolling is being tricky today. In terms of, where's my Tucker slide? So we have, we have seen increased enrollment at Tucker related to a couple of topics. One, we've had a lot of families move to Milton in the Tucker community. And we have, with, with the support of Principal DeRoche, we've made a concerted effort to really support families staying in their neighborhood school. We have increased, I was able this year to redeploy a special education teacher FTE from one building to Tucker to provide additional special ed supports in that building. Going into next year, one of our budget requests was for the intensive learning model. That would afford Tucker the opportunity to have co-taught classes at every grade level. That gives you a few things. First of all, it allows students from the Tucker neighborhood to potentially stay in their home school versus having to move to a building to receive support through one of the more specialized strands. It also will allow students in general, general education to have access to a special education teacher throughout the day. Both groups benefit when there's two teachers in the room. So we are asking for that within the budget request for next year. If we can, one of the great things about the intensive learning model is that it's space neutral. Being thoughtful about the space issues, this model puts the special ed teacher in the general ed classroom so that we're not asking for additional space to support students. So the combination of increased enrollment and trying to build supports and resources there have really allowed us to change that enrollment from forty-six to seventy-three this year. And I can't say enough about the collaboration with Principal DeRoche and how that's really allowing families a chance to stay in their neighborhood school, which is something that was communicated clearly to us. The families would like to stay and we've been really thoughtful and, and hearing that message.
Great, thank you.
I have just a couple of questions. If that's okay, I, I do, I want to just start by really appreciating all the work you've done and your team has done and, you know, the faculty and staff in collaboration with families that you've all done that brings this data to us because I know that it's been so much effort. I really appreciate the proof, I guess, that like when you focus on a goal, you, you can make quick progress and that's really encouraging. And I feel like it, you know, I've only served on school committee for almost two years at this point. And even two years ago, the data to me felt more overwhelming in a sense because I, I didn't have a direct experience of like the proof points of what happens when you have, you, you get resources to deploy in a targeted manner and then you see results. And so I just, thank you all so much for the work that has gone into this. The, the two quick questions I had, just continuing along with my colleagues, so make sure I'm clear, I'm clear in my understanding of the data. So one was back to, actually back to the same slide that member Vargis asked, no, sorry, that Dr. Miranda just asked about with the internal versus external for Pierce. And just making sure when it identifies the number of students, the total num, like the total number of students and then the students on IEPs. So those, so the first, the top line of students, does that represent students who are not on IEPs? Who have been removed internally?
So the first line is the total episodes of removal. So eight removals happened externally at Pierce. Adina spoke to that. It was four students specifically. So these are episodes as opposed to individual student count. So in the IEP row, you see that twenty-four.
Well, actually, I think that's supposed to be four, Sue. I don't know how the.
It's supposed to be four. I think.
I, I saw that and I was confused. Yeah.
I'm deleting my two typo.
Yeah.
Thank you, Adina.
Oh, I think that answers my question.
Yeah, I apologize for the typo.
No, that's fine. Because, because this is actually, yeah. Okay. So my other quick question was about the high school removals. And actually, Adina, you had shared that, you know, last year when, when there were all like thirty-six or however, whatever removals and that ninety-nine percent of them had been for vaping. I'm just curious and hearing about the success of the program that you're implementing around that issue. Like, can you characterize at all whether these external removals that you are seeing, even though they're very few compared to previous years? Are, are these, you know, are these other issues that maybe were in the like one percent of issues last year? Or are you seeing increases in other issues beyond vaping? Just kind of wondering about that.
Yeah, so it's interesting. Five of those ten are actually students with, who are in, I forget Sue what program the students are in, but they're in a specific high need program at the high school. Five of those incidents are. And so then the other five are really fighting or possession of weapon, nothing. You know, it's, there hasn't been anything like super extreme at the high school, which is really, really good. And so it's, these are one-day removals for like kind of really stupid mistakes and they were never repeated after. But five of them were repeat offenses from a couple kids and Sue can talk about what program it's in. Just, we're struggling with a couple kids in some of the high needs, some separate programs. But I would say we're definitely not seeing an increase in fighting or anything at the high school because it's like five people, three people were in like the same scuffle, right? And then they all were suspended, they were removed for a day. And last year I'd say we saw, and actually, so Pierce was the one that had thirty-something, mid-thirties in suspensions. The high school had like sixty, sixty-four suspensions.
Oh, wow. Okay.
So it was, the high school had a lot more than Pierce last year, which is really interesting. So that's why when I said one percent like last year, right? It was, it, it, you know, it kind of is equivalent to like the five, you know, where it's just like a scuffle that happened and they had to be removed in order to really get to the bottom of what happened and just to make sure that everything was safe in the community. I hope that answers, but.
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you so much. And, oh, go ahead.
So when we make the commitment to being inclusive and supporting students with a higher level of need within our in-district programs, we have to recognize that because these youngsters have a very high level of need that may be paired with a high level of dysregulation. have a very high level of need, that may be paired with a high level of dysregulation. And so, a piece of this external removal from the high school represents a few youngsters with a very high level of need who have experienced some removals for safety. But the good, the good news story on that is that we are making a commitment to try and include more students and have them be able to access services in their neighborhood rather than traveling to out-of-district environments that might, you know, involve van transportation and things like that. So, there, there is always that sort of give to get as we build programs. We do need to be mindful that this data will move and flow as the students' needs change. Adina spoke about the end-of-year data for both buildings. The numbers that I gave you a moment ago when I reviewed this slide were representative of March data because I wanted you to be able to make the direct comparison of March to March. So, we've given you both sets of data tonight.
Great. Thank you so much. And just my last comment on this is, you know, again, I remember we kind of discussed this in the context of the discipline policy and the updates that you referenced with the state laws from the fall. It, you know, just reminding myself and as a community, keeping in mind that the goals do, you know, tie back around to academic achievement. When we see all these zeros, that's time that, you know, students used to be out of class, missing instructional time and, you know, that's such an important outcome here is that those students are getting more time, you know, with their teachers and on their academic instruction. So, just thanks again. And I see a member Vargis.
A member of us standing is actually before me.
Thank you, Anna. I appreciate it. Sue, as you know, I've been a big fan of your work for many years because you're willing to, you're tackling very challenging issues and you do it very well. Last year when you presented, you'd shared that the students, let's say a decade ago, who'd been flagged for communications disorders were also the same students that were appearing in this data in middle and high school. Given the, the drastic decline, do you believe that the, actually from your data, are these students the same students that are still on this report? Or are they no longer appearing on this report because of the interventions?
I think that's a direct, I think many of those students are not represented here as having had removals and that is a direct impact of Adina's work. It is incredible to observe and see how she interacts with students who previously might have struggled to find their belonging and they have found a kindred spirit in her work with them. And, you know, I, one of the greatest successes that I think we've had this year is, is really building restorative models within the school so that kids who might have alternatively experienced discipline now have a conduit for that, for that expression. So, I'm gonna say that the, all of the credit goes to Adina and the staff that she's working with who have made the commitment to take the time and have the conversations with students and, and build the belonging. I mean, when you see her come into the, into, you know, a building with kids from another building who are excited to be there and talk to students, it's phenomenal. So, yes, the data shows that students who twelve to fifteen years ago might have been identified as being in one or both of our disproportionalsities, those are not the students for whom these discipline removals represent. And that is really truly attributed to her work.
My only ask out of all of this is that I, my general concern when we see success like this is usually the funding disappears or the program goes away. And I would love for this to continue to be just a part of the way Milton does its work and not something that goes away once the state has removed their hand from Milton and then the federal money goes away and then this all goes away. So, if there's any way as a committee or as an administration, we can be very deliberate to ensure that this continues, I would like to see that.
Adding to that, the Department of Education reports the data a year later. So, we will be seeing last year's data and next year's allocation for this work. So, they have built in a natural buffer where they want you to sustain efforts to support growth in that direction as opposed to, okay, great, problem solved, move on. So, we do anticipate that these areas will continue to be requirements within those federal money that we have allocated for Adina's work, for example. Their early learning coaches is another example because they work a year in a years, if that makes sense.
It does. Thank you.
Yes. Director Galloway Jones, if you want to respond to something that was just being discussed, is that okay? Is that okay, Anna? Go ahead, Claire. I don't he, I can't hear you.
Can you hear?
Yes.
Okay. I did, I'm sorry. I just wanted to respond to member Danny because she talked about, how do we sustain this work? I think part of the sustaining is also having an understanding that the RJ work is closely aligned to the equity work and that as, you know, when we were proposing to expand the budget for the Equity Office, that's also including RJ work and hopefully expanding it, not just about Equity Leads, but also Equity Coach and being able to hire an additional RJ coach at some point. That's how we sustain the work along with Desi's built-in natural buffer.
Thanks. Member Vargis.
Thank you. I just had one last question. This was about on slide five about the historical trends in enrollment. And then also going to slide eight, I noticed, you know, obviously our numbers are going up year over year and now we're at about twenty percent. I noticed that our highest area is for specific learning disabilities at twenty-four point six percent. Would you be able to kind of, you know, and I, I know when we plan budgets and things, sometimes we, you know, we might have to look a few years out just to kind of figure out based on the trends in enrollment. Would you be able to tell me that like what you've requested this year and what you were, you know, when you think about forecasting, do we have enough resources in place to cover some of these specific, for instance, like the specific learning disabilities?
So, sort of the historical trends in enrollment, when I came to the district in eighteen, I was questioning, not our data, I was questioning how it was, when the state collects data on enrollment, it looks at different factors. And I believe that the seventeen, eighteen number that may not represent where we actually were. We may have been a little bit higher. So, I had shared that a few years ago with school committee, just kind of been looking at the data when I got here. And I almost took it off because I don't want it to be misleading data, but I am curious about that total number. As we look, we have steadily increased, you know, one percent-ish annually. That is commensurate with many other districts and post-COVID numbers. We did see our biggest boom during that COVID year. You can see that jump. And we evaluated a lot of students who were struggling. Remember, families, some families chose full remote instruction, some went to private school, some came and students had that hybrid schedule. We know, we've referred to it as, you know, lost learning or, or mislearning, but we also know that, you know, we need to continue to plan for that. We're going to be planning for post-COVID-related learning for fifteen years, not two years. We need to think about it as a marathon and constantly giving kids an opportunity to double dip back on those early skills. So, we believe that the increased enrollment related to SLD, a component of it is that we are better at diagnosing students earlier. There is new research. There are new assessment tools. There's better information now than there was ten years ago about identifying early learning deficits. We also know that we anticipate there are students in this group that have been impacted by COVID and early learning. If you are remote and you are trying to learn early phonology, that is a very challenging job. So, we anticipate that both variables are related to why that number has grown. The third piece is that when you look at the families of the IEPs who have moved to the district, we've had quite a few students in this category. In terms of how we responded to it, you can see on our program, I go in the wrong way, go in the wrong way, I apologize to the committee. On our program overview where we talk about what we do to support students, we have expanded our language-based programming. We started multiple years ago with the co-taught classrooms at Tucker Element, excuse me, at Glover Elementary School. This year, we opened a self-contained or a small group language-based classroom for kids with specific learning disabilities, which includes things like dyslexia. And we have expanded our language-based programs for kids who are more neurodiverse. And that program will be expanding to Pierce in the fall. So, we have already been planning for that change and growth in enrollment. Most of it has been something that we've accomplished through thoughtful consideration of how we distribute our resources. This is not an area where we have had an ask for additional resources. The, the ask was really related to the intensive learning model for Tucker and the autism strand supports for our students who are growing out of our preschool and going into elementary and our autism programs in Colley Cotter are really full. So, we were asking for space to expand that model and that is something that we will be talking about expanding over years because those kids are with us from kindergarten through fifth grade at Colley Cot. So, there's only so many slots every year as kids age through the district. And then the expansion of the autism program to the high school was the second big ask, again, because our middle schoolers are moving up to the high school and those numbers are growing. So, we're gonna continue to need to have to have supports for that population as well.
Thank you.
All right. Well, thank you so much again, Director Maselli and, and your team. And I guess if there are no more questions, we can hand it back to you, Dr. McKinney.
I want to say thank you to the committee for your time and your support of special education in Milton. I want to thank the teachers and staff and the families and CPAC. We've had an amazing go this year and I'm looking forward to the rest of what this year has to offer. So, I thank the committee for their time. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Tough act to follow, but a couple of district updates. First, Unity Night returned in person for the Tucker community before the break. It featured the Tucker fourth grade course and performances from every grade level. It was a standing room only event in Milton High School auditorium. Special thanks to Ms. Penny Peters, who just designed, was selected to be on the T-shirts and the program this year. A big thank you to Ms. Karen Marsh, the choreographer for grades K to five, and Ms. Nicole Davis, the choreographer for preschool, and Brother Dennis Slaughter, the grade four choral director. And a big shout out to Assistant Principal Kirsten Driscoll, who was the coordinator of this whole event alongside the Diversity Committee and the PTO. Last night, the Pierce Middle Schools DEI Committee hosted a community event that was attended by over sixty parents, caregivers and community members. And on behalf of the district, I want to thank the members of the DEI Committee for their continuous support and commitment to this work. Special thanks goes out to Principal Bill Fish, Claire Galloway Jones, Adina Schechter, and Milton High School students Oliver Jones, Florian Zoll, May Fun Ling, and El Craig Head Goldman. The feedback from participants was the workshops were overwhelmingly positive and there were tons of enthusiasm for offerings like this in our community. Some other reminders, tomorrow is an early release day. March seventh at six-thirty, there's a CPAC meeting to go over five oh four plans. March eighth at seven PM, the class of twenty-three, I'll be hosting the Harlem Wizards at the high school in the Copeland Fieldhouse. March fifteen, there's the first grade, first grade information night, six-thirty at the high school in the auditorium. And March twenty-seventh at six-thirty, another CPAC meeting going over evaluations and eligibility. So, please, a reminder to make sure you check the district master calendar and your school calendar for important dates coming up. And with that, that ends our updates. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Does anybody have any questions for Dr. McKinney? Great. So, thank you again. Next on our agenda is Citizen Speak. And so, under our policy BEDH, we set aside up to fifteen minutes to hear from members of the community who may be attending to share some comments with us. Just a reminder that we can hear from individuals for up to three minutes apiece. And if you would like to speak, please just raise your hand. And Dr. Pavlicek, are you able to elevate people?
I am. At the moment, there are no hands raised.
Okay. So, if nobody is planning to speak tonight at Citizen Speak, then the next item on our agenda is the Policy Subcommittee Report. And we are conducting a second reading of the Section D policies, the revisions to a number of fiscal policies that we reviewed at our last meeting. I will make a motion to approve a second reading of these policies and that can open up any discussion that anyone may want to have. So.
I'll second, I'll second that motion.
Okay, thanks. I'll just, I'll just say in the motion what the policies are. So, the motion is made to approve the second reading of the following policies. Policy DA, Fiscal Management Goals. Policy DB, Annual Budget. Policy DBD, Budget Planning. Policy DBG, Budget Adoption Procedures. And Policy DJA, Purchasing Authority. So, member White, do you still second that motion?
Yes, thank you.
Are there any questions or comments or discussion on any of these five policies? We have the red line versions. It looks like some of us are reading through, so we'll just take a moment to make sure everybody is ready. Do people still like another couple of minutes? Are we ready? Okay. Does anyone have any questions or discussion? Okay. All right. So, we'll take a roll call vote. A member Ross Denny?
Yes.
Dr. Miranda?
Yes.
Member White?
Yes.
Member Vargis?
Yes.
And I'm a yes as well. Great. Thank you again, Dr. Pavlicek, for all your help navigating those updates. And And at this point, I will turn it over to Member White for the Finance Subcommittee Report.
Okay. Finance met yesterday and the issue on the agenda yesterday was that Senator Timmeltie sent an email to all of us as he sends it to all of his other constituency groups in this district, asking if there were any specific funding requests that we might have for the, the schools. So we had some discussion about some ideas for those, for those possibilities. And then at the end of the discussion, we decided since the administrative team was meeting with their leadership team, that they would go back to their leadership team, have some discussion and bring forward next week any specific proposals that we would then submit to Senator Timmeltie's office. Then we have a vendor warrant in the number thirty-three dated on March second in the amount of five hundred and twenty-one thousand, one hundred and forty-four dollars and sixteen cents. Wonder if someone would make a motion to second that?
I second.
Okay, and do a roll call vote. Dr. Carol?
Yes.
Member Vargis?
Yes.
Dr. Miranda?
Yes.
Member Ross Denny?
Yes.
And myself is a yes. And then I wanted to ask you all to reaffirm the vote that we took in executive session to increase the Director of Community Schools salary to a hundred thousand dollars retroactive to July first, two thousand and twenty-two. Can I have a second on that?
Second.
Okay, we'll do a roll call vote. Dr. Carol?
Yes.
Member Vargis?
Yes.
Dr. Miranda?
Yes.
Member Ross Denny?
Yes.
And myself is a yes. And that's it for finance this evening.
Great, thanks. So that just brings us to approval of minutes. So we received the minutes of the February fifteenth, twenty twenty-three School Committee Meeting. And I'd like to make a motion to approve those minutes for February fifteenth. Is there a second?
Second.
Second.
We'll do a roll call vote. Member White?
Yes.
Dr. Miranda?
Yes.
Member Vargis?
Yes.
Member Ross Denny?
Yes.
I'm a yes as well. So that just brings us to next meeting agenda items. And I know that Member White, as you were just saying, we will have a finance report and it sounds like at least one thing on that agenda will be the discussion of recommendations or the request for. Okay, Senator Timmeltie, great. I know that we will have a policy report. We have a policy meeting next week. I don't know if it's next week or not, it's the fourteenth, I think. That's not, that's two weeks from now, but it, in any case, not exactly sure, you know, what will be coming out of policy if anything, but we'll have a report on it one way or the other. Are there any other items for the next meeting agenda? And just a reminder that this meeting will be March twenty-second. We had rearranged the calendar a little bit.
So the Strategic Planning Committee will have met by then, so.
Okay, great. Add that to the agenda. Thank you. Anything else? Okay, and we will have the previously planned things, including the presentation from Bill Ritchie, as we've discussed. Okay, terrific. So I guess if there's nothing else, we can make a motion to adjourn. I'll, I'll make that motion. Is there a second?
I second that.
Okay, thank you. Roll call vote. Member Vargis?
Yes.
Member Ross Denny?
Yes.
Dr. Miranda?
Yes.
Member White?
Yes.
And I'm a yes as well. So thank you again, everybody, and have a good rest of your evening.
Have a good night.
Thank you.
Thanks.